Good afternoon. This is December 13th, 2022, and this is the December meeting of the Pinehurst Village Council. We have a regular meeting and a work session planned tonight. There are a number of subjects in both the regular meeting and the work session that have quite a few interesting details of village activities and decisions to be made by the village council either tonight or over the coming weeks. So we value your attention and participation here. If you are not in Village Hall at the moment and are listening to this meeting via livestream, I would encourage you to send any comments you might wish to make to the village council on any subjects to the following email address. It's publiccomments@vopnc.org. It's publiccomments@vopnc.org. Village Clerk will receive those and distribute them to the council members and staff as appropriate. If you are here in Village Hall and wish to make comments at the end of our regular meeting in the comment period, there is a sign up sheet in the rear of the Assembly Hall. If you would please put your name and address on that, we will go over that list at the end of the regular meeting and call on you for comments that you would like to make. That list will be available for the next little while. The village clerk will pick that up and deliver it to me a little bit later. So having called the meeting to order, we have all the village council here tonight: Jeff Sanborn, our village manager, several members of staff and of the public. And our first official piece of business, item number two, will be to call on council members and the village manager for their reports. So Jeff Sanborn, do you have reports tonight, please?
Thank you, John. A couple of things I'd like to comment on. The first is, we had quite a power outage to deal with there last week. And you know, as we look back as village staff, we could probably identify several weather-related events that probably had a bigger physical impact on our community. But this one was different. It was different because of the psychological impact of why it happened and how it happened. But I tell you, after watching the community go through this, I just want to thank everybody for their patience, their cooperation, their teamwork. Everybody kept a positive spirit, worked together, kept their cool, kept their resolve, and we got through it. So that was really cool to see. And I want to commend everybody for their resilience. It really says a lot about our community, the way people behaved in the face of that adversity. We recognized that we had some problems with communications associated with this event. And a lot of those challenges were associated with the fact that power was in short supply. But we're working through that and trying to identify ways that we can mitigate those challenges and try to prevent some of the shortcomings that we saw this go around. Of note, you know, a lot of folks in our community rely on Spectrum for their phone service. And when the electricity is out, Spectrum's out, and so you lost your phone service. And so one of our primary methods of pushing information, that being our Code Red system to the phones, is kind of not an option for a lot of our community. And so we have to rely on the other means of communication, like our website and communicating with, you know, the media, the pilot, and others to try to get information out to people. Another factor with regard to the phone system was some of the carriers, cellphone carriers, and of note, I think Verizon really was struggling with the effectiveness or the capacity of their towers. Even though they had power to their towers, it wasn't up to full, you know, full speed or it wasn't up to full capacity. And so there are big chunks of time during this event where the ability to push a lot of data through those towers was limited. And where that manifested itself, at least based on what we've been able to figure out after the fact, is that when we were pushing Code Red messages out using our reverse 911 system, it was overloading the system. It was overloading those towers. And as a result, many of the calls never went through. They just couldn't, there just wasn't enough capacity there. But we've worked with Code Red, and we've identified ways to change the batching. So in non-critical, time-sensitive situations like this, we can ask for a smaller batch size, but multiple batches, to try to alleviate that overwhelming situation that we had. And we've also learned about an ability that we have to force a redial, if you will, or second notification, that we'll be able to use in the future. So we'll work on those things. We're also going to be doing a drive here in the coming weeks to get more people to sign back up for Code Red, that service, and I think inform people that we can be more effective and reliable in emergency situations if they're selecting text as a method of notification, because text doesn't take a lot of capacity in the cellphone business. So again, I just want to circle back to thanking the community for all of your resilience. So most of us retained, gained power on Wednesday. On Thursday and Friday, the council and senior staff were here in Village Hall, working real hard on the strategic planning retreat. And this is part of our annual process that culminates with the adoption of a budget and a five-year plan next summer. But we had a lot of great discussion here in this room about council's kind of overarching priorities for this next five years. And the staff looks forward to trying to bring that to fruition in this five-year plan that we're putting together. That's all I've got, John.
Jeff, thank you for those two reports. I'll just add and comment back to you that, on the one hand, during the power outage, and then on the other hand, with the strategic retreat, the staff, as we discussed before, was extraordinarily well-prepared. I think the village handled the power outage quite well. And I think we all noticed, in what little traveling around by car we should have been doing, that when we came to intersections, people were deferring and being cautious. And as you said, citizens really did try to help each other and be careful during that time. And with respect to the retreat, again, the material we had, which we'll even be touching on tonight, I think, as we go through our meetings, was very well-prepared and presented, and we thank all of you for that. Reports from myself since our last December meeting, just two things. Continuing and actually somewhat completing the 2022 celebration of Frederick Law Olmsted's 200th birthday and Donald Ross's 150th birthday on November 23rd, which was Ross's birth date, members of the village staff, other organizations in town, including the resort, and I had a phone call with our colleagues in Dornoch, Scotland. The mayor of Scotland and the general manager of the Royal Dornoch Golf Club were zoomed in for about a 30-minute conversation back and forth, and I look forward to additional contact with them over time as council sees fit. And also, I'll make note of the tree lighting, which was the last official lighted event, given what happened the next day. But again, it seemed that the citizens were having a great time, and a very large crowd was present for that. Those are the reports I'll make, and I'll turn it over now to Pat Pizzella. Pat, do you have comments tonight?
Thank you. And obviously, want to reiterate what was said earlier about the power outage situation. I had the fortune, it was fortunate, to go to the fire station on both days to charge my phones. And so I met some new people that I didn't know from the village, and it was, the room was full, and people were there charging their phones. Duke Power came with some refreshments and some stacked phone chargers. So a lot of village residents were taking advantage of village facility that was able to remain open and provide some fundamental service, like charging your phones, as we know the value of that. And I also, for those who weren't at the village, at the fire station, you could run into anybody else at Harris Teeter. So I want to thank Harris Teeter, who became our community center for this event, particularly those folks who wanted to watch the football games and couldn't get TV reception. On another note, I feel obligated to congratulate Dr. Morgan and our village manager, Jeff, on the West Point victory, one of the better football games. You've seen, they were plugging it at the last meeting at the retreat, and it turned out to be quite a football game. So congratulations to both of you. I'm glad to see the celebration ended and you're here. And actually, announcement-wise, well, I was going to ask one other question, sort of an announcement. I saw it in, I think it was a report from the village manager, that on January 23rd, we're anticipating that glass recycling will start back up at the Public Services Complex. Did I read that correctly in a report? I did not. Okay? Then I withdraw the mention of that. I don't know where I saw it. I thought it was good news.
Maybe we just take a break, Pat?
Real quick, just on the glass recycling. We did receive a grant to place a glass-only recycling facility at our Public Services property. We've selected a location. We've received a grant. So now we've just got to get the dumpster set up and the pad set up.
So it won't be January?
It's signage, but it won't be January.
Okay, thank you. Good news, but we'll have a date in the future. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Pat, thank you. Lydia, would you have any comments tonight?
I do one thing. Yes, this is a loud microphone. In connection with the power outage, the convention and Visitors Bureau has started More Miracles for the Holidays, and I think I'll read their description because it's very good. There are a lot of businesses who lost money during that blackout period. And it says, "Please purchase gift cards or make in-store purchases at our shops, dine in our delicious restaurants, or come stay at one of our beautiful, comfortable hotels to help support the local businesses that are so necessary to our area. Be a part of making More Miracles for the Holidays." Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia.
That's it.
Good. Jeff Morgan?
A few things here. PJ Cog was canceled for November, did not occur. Due to the power outage, the fundraiser for the, excuse me, for the horse track did not go on on Wednesday. That's been delayed now till Sunday, and that will go on the same schedule at six o'clock. So if anybody wants to join in the fundraiser for the horse track, the New York Tenors will be singing over there. And we have a guest appearance from Laura Morgan, who will be also singing, so on there. On the power outage, I just want to also throw some kudos out to our staff, specifically our emergency services. I think they did an outstanding job. Police force, our fire department really stood up. A lot of long hours that were put in there. I'd also like to throw the leadership of the village staff on there. A lot of hours that went into this. I feel we were very well-prepared in handling this, and we did a good job. And just as you heard the village manager, though, we're also looking at this again and saying, how do we get better? How do we continue to improve? And that's the sign of a truly professional organization. And so kudos to our community staff here and what you've done. Great job.
Thank you, Jeff. Jane?
Thank you. I was pleased to attend the Pinehurst Business Partners Annual Christmas Event last night. And I expressed to them on behalf of the village how important all their products and services and enthusiasm are to making the village a vibrant place to visit and shop, and how important the Pinehurst Business Partners Organization is to the village and being able to communicate with its business community. And the importance of that line of communication, of course, was an important topic at our planning retreat at numerous points during that discussion. So anyway, I was glad to be able to say that. And I'd just like to also echo the praise and the thanks for all the village staff did, our emergency service workers and everything during that outage. It was an awful situation, and you guys really made it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Having concluded that part of our agenda, we'll move on to agenda item number three, which is a motion to approve the consent agenda. Are there any council members who have a question about any of the consent items there in the minutes and want to withdraw something for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, item number three?
I move to approve all items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
That's a motion by council member Pizzella. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by council member Hogaman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Move on to item number four, which is an annual presentation of our comprehensive financial report. Jeff Sanborn, any introductions on this?
John Frank is here from four of us. We've seen John here several years in the past, so welcome back, John. This is an annual report that Dixon Hughes Goodman used to do for us, now four of us. So take it away, John.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to discuss the results of the fiscal '22 audit with you this afternoon. All good news to report, nothing controversial in this year's audit report. You should have gotten links to two documents in your agenda. The first is the, the first link was to the annual comprehensive financial report, and the other link is to the auditor's required communications report. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review these documents, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. We did issue a unmodified or clean audit opinion as a result of this year's audit. Additionally, the village's financial statements received the certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. This is an award that the village has received for many years. I don't know how many, but well in excess of 20 years, I believe. So it's something that Towns Finance Department should be very proud of. Would like to just point out a few highlights from the current year's audited financial statements. The fund balance of the general fund increased $1.9 million this year. This net increase was a result of several factors. First contributing factor was an increase in property tax revenues of about $767,000 this year. That was a result of a one and a half cent increase in the property tax rate, as well as continued additions to the village's tax base. Sales tax revenues were up about $781,000 this year due to an increase in tourism sales, economic activity, and also due to the increased efforts on the part of the state to collect online sales taxes. Recreation program revenues and Fairbarn rental revenues increased $229,000 this year as the village returned to pre-pandemic activities and eliminations on restrictions on gathering sizes. And actual operating and capital expenditures were lower than amounts that had been budgeted. So all these factors led to an increase in the general fund fund balance. At the end of fiscal '22, the total fund balance of the general fund amounted to $15.2 million, of which $4.6 million was unassigned fund balance. As you know, the council has established a policy that the village should maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance of 15% of actual general fund expenditures and a total fund balance of at least 30% of budgeted general fund expenditures. Currently, the village has an assigned fund balance equal to 23% of general fund expenditures. So that is above your policy, stated policy goal of 15%. Total fund balance at the end of the fiscal year amounted to 61% of total budgeted expenditures. So again, you're well above the minimum 30% threshold that was established. By comparison to your peer group in North Carolina, the average fund balance is about 54%. So you're very close to the statewide average. And of course, there was no outstanding bonded debt or installment debt that the village was responsible for during fiscal '22. The last, or the most recent outstanding installment debt was paid off in fiscal '21. The village also received in fiscal '22 $2.6 million of ARPA funding, and you either already have received or will receive a matching amount of $2.6 million in this current fiscal year, fiscal '23. As you know, these proceeds are being accounted for in a separate special revenue fund. No ARPA funds were expended in fiscal '22, and it is anticipated these funds will be used for revenue replacement in, beginning in fiscal '23. The only significant new accounting standard that the village was required to adopt this year was, of course, GASB 87. As you might recall, that's the new leasing standard that requires units of government to record leases on their balance sheet, whereas under the old accounting rules, these leases were just expensed as you paid them over the life of the lease. The impact of this standard was very minimal, very immaterial. Both a $36,000 asset and offsetting liability recorded on the town, on the village's balance sheet at the beginning of the fiscal year, and there was no impact on beginning fund balance from that position. We also issued a report on internal control over financial reporting. In this report, we stated that we became aware of no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. We also reported that we did not become aware of any material instances of noncompliance with provisions of laws, grants, regulations, and contracts. The village was also required to have a state single audit related to the Powell Bill program this year, and we state in this report that the village complied in all material respects with requirements related to this grant program. And as I mentioned, there was a second report in your materials. This is the required communications report to this board. And really, nothing of great significance to report in there. We just stated there were no significant audit findings. We did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit, and we did not identify any material unanticipated adjustments. Those are the only comments I have on the financial statements. Mr. Mayor, you asked me just to touch briefly on the merger that Dixon Hughes Goodman entered into, and didn't know if, how much of that information had been communicated to you. But just to, just to give you some background, effective June 1 of this year, Dixon Hughes Goodman, we merged with a firm primarily located in the middle part of the United States, BKD LLP. BKD was a little larger than legacy Dixon Hughes Goodman, but basically, it was a representative merger of equals. There was very little overlap in office locations as a result of this merger. I think maybe we overlapped in two or three markets, but it rounded our geographic footprint very nicely. Just some of the reasons for this merger, as you may or may not be aware, there's been a lot of merger activity among accounting firms in the country. We felt it was necessary to do this, just to continue to be able to offer resources for our clients and to continue to attract, you know, good staff. As you know, there's a war on talent these days, and attracting new staff is becoming, you know, increasingly challenging. And, you know, as a result of being a bigger firm, we found it easier to attract staff when we go recruiting on college campuses. But prior to the merger, Dixon Hughes Goodman was a top 20 firm. They merged four of us, is about number eight nationally. They had a, probably a larger governmental nonprofit practice than legacy Dixon Hughes Goodman. So a lot of resources, or additional resources are now available for our governmental clients. Probably the legacy BKD, probably 10 to 15% of their revenues were related to governmental and nonprofit audits. So I don't know if that answers all your questions, Mr. Mayor, but that's just a brief overview of the merger that took place. And be glad to answer any other questions you might have about this year's audit.
Just before we get into any financial questions, continuing on the merger. So the new name of the firm, though, is Four of Us, right?
Yes.
Of the two firms that merged, your colleagues in the Midwest and Dixon Hughes here in the East. Is that right?
Right. And just to give you some background on where that name comes from, it's sort of play on words, forward vision. So I think we paid a marketing firm to come up with that name, and we're all starting to get used to it. It's taken a while, but yeah, that's, that's the, sort of the play on the words there.
And in the combined firms, and I think you touched on this, it appears that the practice of accounting and advisory services to municipalities is a continuing and major business line of the company. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, as I mentioned, it was even more of a point of emphasis with the legacy BKD firm. So we've been able to centralize a lot of our resources, consolidate a lot of our continuing education, and, you know, develop a little greater proficiency in that area, and which is, you know, as you know, an ever-changing, you know, accounting area.
So if we're continuing to work with your firm, we're working with a firm that is active in the practice of municipal accounting and tax and all other related issues. Is that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because there, as you said, there are fewer and fewer of those, and to know that we're working with a firm that does specialize in that area is important to us. So thank you for confirming that. Now, we've been through a good bit of our financial statements over the last week or two in some of the retreats and planning sessions, as well as the reports by Brooke, which she did before she retired. But I'm sure there may be some questions among the council members here. We're pretty comfortable, I think, with the financial status of the village and happy you've confirmed what you have to us tonight. But there may be some questions. I hope there are. Any questions from council members about the financial activity and the audit, or anything else for John? Pat?
Yeah, I have one question on your letter, two questions. Page two. When your letter says that we performed tests of its compliance with certain provisions, blah, blah, blah. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not an objective of our audit. Who does provide an opinion on VOP's, on the village's compliance?
You're referring to the independent auditor's report?
I'm on the, the letter to us, page two.
Oh, okay.
And...
Okay, so specifically, the...
One paragraph above the one at the bottom of the page.
Okay, bottom of the first page. Okay.
It was not an objective of our audit. So I'm wondering, does someone else provide an opinion on compliance? And it may not be your question to answer, or maybe it's someone else's.
Yeah, this refers to the so-called Yellow Book, the compliance report. Just under the standards, we, you know, we are basically stating that we did not become aware of any instances of noncompliance. It's kind of a quirk in the way the audit is designed. We test for compliance, but we don't provide an opinion. It's kind of a nuanced wording. But yeah, we do test for compliance with laws, regulations, grant agreements, and state whether or not we become aware of any instances of noncompliance. And, you know, as a result of our test, we didn't become aware of any such instances.
You didn't notice anything. Okay. And then to the last paragraph there, you note, "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls or over financial reporting that we consider to be material weaknesses." I'm used to the phrase "significant deficiencies" in front of the word deficiencies in my previous life. Is that phrase "any deficiencies" is, it's good news. It's rather blanketed. So I wonder...
I mean, typically, what auditors identify, you know, internal control issues, we'll call them. They either fall into the category of significant deficiencies or material internal control weaknesses.
Right.
As you probably know, significant deficiencies are less serious than a material weakness.
That's why I didn't see the word "significant." That's what made me scribble in this note.
And it doesn't state it, but we didn't have a separate management letter either. We didn't have any management letter comments that, you know, didn't even rise to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness.
So there's no management letter?
Correct.
Okay. I did, I don't have any other questions for Mr. Frank. I did, since we were supplied with the refresher, I'll call it a refresher, the report that was prepared by Brooke and staff on the annual comprehensive financial report, I had a few questions and observations, because I went through it all, thinking we might discuss it. So I know Brooke's not here, and I don't suppose you're going to be able to answer any of these, or am I wrong?
I can try.
You can try. Try's good.
But if Brooke was here, I'd feel much more confident in the quality of responses.
I understand. Try gets us going. Well, let me try a few, as I'm running through these. And...
Pat, let us know what page you're on, or what section, if you would.
Yeah, I'm going right through the book here.
Yep.
My first, I guess it was, yes, on page 15, where we were sort of into our economic factors and planning and so forth, we projected approximately 150 homes to be built in FY 2023. We projected approximately 150 homes to be built in F Y 2023. Obviously, we're projecting those at one time and before we get into the situation, we know there's less homes being built. And I'm, I'm wondering, as we move forward, do we change the formula or do we factor things in to adjust these projections?
Yeah, Pat, so in the, when we developed the F Y 24 budget, which we're going to start in January, February, we will bring those numbers down to what's the trend is currently. So that'll be less than 150 that was, has been the historic projection.
And the, the budget expenditures in the general fund, which note the, the 1.2 million for the synthetic turf and the 1 million for given more library and archives improvements, we are, we are scheduled to be spending that 1.2 million is my understanding, right?
That's correct.
And the 1 million we have not at all spent. Okay. All right, let me jump forward. I am now into the statistical section, page 72. The, I gathered this, does this get updated shortly? It goes from fiscal year 213 to 222. And it's very, very helpful because it's right there, one page, half a page with a good snapshot.
Oh, tax rate, really?
Yeah, the tax rate and so forth. When do we get the fiscal year 23 number and the tax year 2022 number?
So this was the fiscal year 22 CAFR, or sorry, ACFR. So that's why it doesn't have 23, but the 23 number is 31.
Right. That was the, the rate. And what I'm looking for in, in the, oh, okay. It's, I see what you're doing. You're just moving it that way, one place. Okay, I get it. Curiosity question on page 73. The number that jumped out at me was as you compare 2013 to 2022, we're looking at our taxpayers in the village of Pinehurst, and there's a large increase from Duke Energy Progress, Inc. And I'm wondering, what prompted that big spike from 30.36% to 53%? Is there any, any particular, something we did or something that happened in the village? Is that, that's not an electrical bill, is it?
But that represents the assessed tax value.
Yes.
And it, here again, I'm just speculating, probably the result of just continuing to build out the infrastructure and perhaps evaluation associated with that, you know, increased over this, you know, 10-year period.
Yeah, we, we can also follow up with the county assessor and ask if there's any.
Yeah, I mean, just be curious. That sounds reasonable. The other one I jumped out at me was Pinewild Project Limited P T N S. It came down from 41% to 23%, from 14 million to 8.8 million. What prompts that? Any idea?
Do not know.
Okay.
But that is also something we can ask the assessor.
Yeah, please do. Obviously, when you give me things to read, I read them. So page 75, the number on lease liabilities, not a very large number, but, you know, we didn't have any until then. What is that, what is that lease? It must be something.
That, that's a result of this new audit accounting standard, G A S B E 87.
It's a result of G A S B E.
Yeah, which, and really, that just represents the kind of the present value of the future, minimum lease payments on several copiers and a couple of postage machines. Those are the only assets.
That's why it's so little involved. The, the next page, 78, the only, I didn't really have a question, I just had an observation. While virtually every category listed here, population, personal income, per capita income and unemployment rate, had a significant change from where it was, again, 10 years ago, which is a great way to look at stuff. The median age in the village of Pinehurst went from 60.6 to 60.3. So it, I mean, there's just that little change in the median age. So it's just sort of a reminder that while our community is changing a little, the demographics in the median age category have just about moved nowhere. The, the next page, page 79, table 13, this is an observation and maybe others may have something to comment on. It looked, and it looks like a good situation to me. We have the, we list our two largest employers, it looks like, and their percentage of total employment. And it went from 83% in 2013 down to 70% in 2022. So now I take that as an indication that our, our economy within the village of Pinehurst is diversifying a little more. I didn't know if anybody else had any insight to that. Is that a?
I, I think you're correct.
We have more businesses that are coming in.
Right, yeah. I, I mean, it was, it, it's pretty dramatic because they, they still are our largest, but let me see where else I got. No, I'm on to, ah, yes, I'm on to page 84. Two questions. Following the stormwater drainage areas, I wanted to be sure I knew what that meant. In 2013, we had 48. In 2022, we had 148. What does that mean? Stormwater drainage areas?
Yeah, so these are projects that the public services, Public Works, they're, in their annual budget, they, they set aside money for these projects that they do each year. So, yeah, and last year, we did 148.
We're just doing more. Is this because we're also, it related obviously to us growing?
Growing, and I think there's been more emphasis in the budget.
We have systematically devoted more resources to stormwater management over time.
Good, okay. I'm just, I was trying to, it's consistent. It shows that over a 10-year period. So it's good news for residents. Just an interesting thing that popped out at me, for nine years, we had two soccer fields, and in 2022, we were down to one soccer field. How did, did we lose a soccer field? How did that work?
Yeah, we did. While the school was being constructed, that was the temporary site.
All right, thank you. And, ah, Mr. Franks, I, my last question, you really, you answered earlier regarding the significant deficiencies identified that I asked it there, too. Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Franks. Thank you, village staff, for indulging me with these questions. I appreciate these reports.
Thank you, Pat. Other questions from council for Doug or especially for John Franks?
Just a comment. In my prior life, I got to be an auditor for a big aid accounting firm before the firm started merging. And you talk about the money you spent for your name. You remember Price Waterhouse Cooper spent a fortune to become Price Waterhouse Coopers. But anyway, in, in all my experience with auditing, you saw some messy audits and some squeaky clean audits. This, to me, seemed like a squeaky clean audit. And also, but as a treasurer, you know, I had to talk to one of your staff people, and I got the impression from her, too. So that should make the village feel good that we have a squeaky clean audit. Our books are just about as squeaky clean as they can be. So thank you so much for that, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
John, thank you very much. Doug as well. I, John, I look forward to seeing you again, I hope, or your success or whatever. Thank you very much for your good work.
All right. Hope everyone has a great holiday.
Thank you.
Same to you, sir. We'll move on to item number five, resolution appointing Bruce Heronimus to the Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustment. Jeff, do you want to introduce this? I see Jeremy is here, but.
I will, and I'll ask Jeremy and Bruce to come on up to the table in case council has any questions you'd like to ask. You know, we, we had a kind of a late notice, I'll call it a late notice. We weren't really sure, sure what Philip Shoemaker was going to do with regard to a potential second term on the Planning and Zoning Board. And kind of late in the process found that, that he indeed was not interested in continuing to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board. So we, we recognize that we haven't done as well with, with regard to this planning and zoning appointment as we have in the past about communications with the council. But we wanted to try to get, move this forward, given the fact that we have the vacancy now, and try to fill that. Bruce comes to us from primarily Pennsylvania, I guess, been a, but been a, a part-time resident here for about 22 years, I think, and then more recently became a full-time resident. Bruce has served in Pennsylvania on the Dairy Township Planning and Zoning Board and has also worked on the Hershey Long-Term Comprehensive Plan Committee. And he's also, also has eight years of experience with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, where he learned a lot about a wide variety of disciplines, as I gather. But maybe most notable, transportation, which is a big factor for us as well here in Pinehurst. And so, you know, we see Bruce as being a very highly qualified and desirable candidate to, to fill this vacancy. In addition, he kind of helps us, I think, with our neighborhood diversity that we try to achieve on, on the Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustments as well. So we present Bruce to you if you have any questions.
Thanks for that additional background, Jeff. I think that, that is helpful. And I, I'll just make note in some of the discussions we've had, there's at least one potentially, another vacancy coming along in the, in the next few months on the Planning and Zoning Board.
One more in the next month or two, and another one next summer.
And we're looking also at the Historic Preservation Commission. They'll have a vacancy as well.
That's right.
From the next comment. All right, fine. Bruce, thank you for being here. Jeremy, always good to see you. Maybe you could talk a little bit more, Bruce, if you would, about your background in planning and what you were doing in Hershey. And I'm a little familiar with Hershey, so I'm, I'm, it's a place not like Pinehurst in many ways, but some similarities as well.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much, members of the council and staff. It's a privilege to, to be here and have this opportunity to be considered. I enjoyed my.
Could you move the mic a little closer to me?
Sure. Sorry. I enjoyed my time very much doing similar work in Dairy Township, known as Hershey, basically. And there are some similarities. I also was a resident in Boulder, Colorado for, for a pretty lengthy undergraduate career. And again, kind of a novel, unique community presented with some, with growth issues in particular in, in Boulder. Dairy Township and Hershey, similarly, very attractive community with kind of limited land due to the Milton Hershey School ownership of several thousand acres. Pinehurst presents a kind of a, another similar, kind of a rec, unique recreational lifestyle Pinehurst is basically heaven for those of us who have been here for any length of time. I mean, it's just, it's a very special place. And I think we're proud to be residents here. And I think the background that I presented, and, and maybe probably the most useful that I, that would draw upon was both in my Department of Transportation years, I worked in the strategic planning area, worked on federal fund authorization programs. But the comprehensive long-term growth activity, I was involved with the Dairy Township. We were looking at a community that was, at that time, this is, you know, a, a long time ago, frankly. But the growth projections were a very important part of what we worked on and school growth in particular, because the schools district is very attractive. And I see a lot of similarities here in terms of the, the improvements that are taking place here in the educational facilities and the attractiveness of it. And so we have the ability to, I think, look at this, this village and the surrounding areas as one that's going to be very attractive for people to want to continue to live in, preserve the uniqueness and the wonderful lifestyle that we have here. And, you know, work hand in hand with, with, with all the affected parties to, to do the best job possible. And I certainly look forward to, to playing a small role and add some value to that.
Thank you. Jeremy, with respect to your coming, you know, Bruce in recent weeks and how that fits into the planning board, what would you, what would you like us to know?
Yes, sir. So when we interviewed, when we interviewed Bruce, a couple of things that stuck out to me was really his high level of professionalism. And his background in government affairs was, was clear in this conversation. And his approach and his acumen was one of, his approach and demeanor was one of wanting to contribute and help our planning board in our current efforts. And so that really stuck out to me as for Bruce, and I just think that he's somebody who could really help us in our efforts and what we present to you, as well as how we help staff.
Thank you. Questions from council members for Bruce or Jeremy? Pat, or?
Yeah, I have a handful of questions. One, thanks for your desire to serve as a volunteer.
Thank you.
What attracted you to submitting an application to the Planning and Zoning Board?
I think I submitted an application maybe a year or two ago when I saw that there was a notice for one. I just, I, I enjoyed the nature of the work from past experience. Being here now full-time over the last three years, and I'm just coming off of two nine-year stints at First Health on, on various boards there. So I've, I got term limited off the two of their entities. And so I found myself with some, some time and, you know, potentially, I'd like to think an area in which I could bring some, some skill and experience.
Jeff made a reference, Jeff Sambor made a reference to geographic balance. What neighborhood do you live in?
I live in Doral Woods.
Oh, okay.
I bought, bought my home there in 2000 with the, you know, strategic insight that I wanted to be here at some point. And I'm one of probably the few beneficiaries of COVID, as it enabled me to transition my business here and, and work full-time for, for a short period of time before I said enough.
So how long have you been a resident?
Full-time.
Yeah.
Three years, but I've had my home here in 22, 22 years.
And so you haven't served on any other Village of Pinehurst advisory boards? This is the only one?
I'm sorry.
You haven't served on any other V O P advisory boards? And you mentioned your experience in Hershey and probably elsewhere on advisory board or planning board or commission. So you had a length of service there?
I think six years.
Six years, yeah, okay. And you, well, you really explained my other question. You already explained why you think this particular one is a fit for you.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Have you had the opportunity to attend any of the Planning and Zoning Boards here?
No, sir.
And during the, I'm asking you to forecast a little, so there's no right or wrong answer. It's a three-year term. Are there any particular issues you expect to come before the Planning and Zoning Board that you are going to be particularly able to provide insight?
I do not, I do not know at this point what that agenda holds.
Okay, that's my questions for now. Thank you.
Jane, do you have questions? Jane, get your microphone on, please.
I'd like to express my appreciation to you for volunteering.
Thank you. I hope you'll feel that way in three years.
I, I wonder, are, are you familiar with the current work that's before the Planning and Zoning Board?
Not intimately, no. Through, through the course of the interview, we, we discussed, you know, a framework of the type of issues, but I don't have any knowledge of any specific items.
I, I think that's the only question I have.
Thank you, Jane. Jeff Morgan, no questions. This is an opportunity for you to ask any questions of the council, if you would like Bruce about the position or your other philosophies about planning and zoning.
I, I do not have any. I think the discussions I'd have with Jeremy and staff. I think the discussions I'd have with Jeremy and staff, I think, was pretty extensive. I did inquire as to the interaction relationship between Village Council and staff and the board, so I think I have a clear understanding of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy, any other closing comments from you?
No, but I hope he gave a good example of his business demeanor and his approach, as well as his background in government affairs, to hopefully satisfy.
Good. One question comes to mind, just picking up from Jeremy's thought, though, a little bit. One of the things that's important to us is consistency in attendance at the meetings of the board, and probably came up in your discussions. So, I anticipate that you're, at least will become familiar with the meeting schedule.
I have January 5th on my calendar now.
Okay, fine. The first Thursday of every month, if I have that, remember that correct? And you're able to be consistent in that because you're a full-time resident now?
Absolutely.
Great, that's good to know. Any other questions or comments from staff or council? We have a motion before us for the approval of appointment of Bruce Heronimus to the Planning and Zoning Board. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 22-25, appointing Bruce Heronimus to the Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustment.
It's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Pat Prizella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No, but I'd like to make a statement.
Is that a unanimous decision?
Yeah, I'm voting aye.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah. One, obviously, your background and qualifications, and listening to your presentation, I think you'll be a fine addition to the Planning and Zoning Board. It's, it's not an, it's not an easy task, it's not ceremonial, it's a serious planning, a serious board that we have. I, myself, have attended almost all their meetings in the last years since I joined the council, so I could learn a lot, and I did. So, I welcome you to the board. I have expressed in the past, and this is not concerned to you, my concern about the process of how we appoint people to the, to these boards and commissions in the village. The municipal code says the council will appoint, and we have a person presented to us and a resume we look at, or an application we look at, and then we are, we vote on that person. I would like us to look at an alternative way to do this, where the, the council is involved in, in a, in sort of a different mode of having options, rather than one candidate to look at, and that we consider mimicking, to a fashion, how councils fill vacancies on the council itself, where there'll be several nominations and that we can look at, and we, as a council, can through rank choice voting, can decide who we think we should select for the appointment, and so we can get to a, a council agreement on that. So, I guess, I'd like to begin some discussion, not here tonight, with, with staff and with members, to see how we can do this, because I, my previous experience in, in this type of role would always lend itself with a little more involvement than sort of just being at the airport when the plane lands. And so, that's my informal request right now, I'm not making a motion or anything of that nature. And welcome to the board.
Thank you, Pat. I think we'll find a way to take that up at a future work session. Jeff, in his introduction, made a comment tonight about a little bit of a unique situation here we have, and I actually think, Bruce, with your background, you surfaced at the right time. But we do have other candidates, and we do have other vacancies to fill, and I think how that process works is something we'll be, we'll be working on to do. So, Bruce, congratulations. Thank you very much for making this commitment to the Village of Pinehurst, and we look forward to your, next meeting will be January.
January 5th.
Good. Anything else?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Jeremy. Good evening.
I'd like to-
Jane, please go ahead.
If I could concur with what Pat just said.
Yeah.
I'm looking at Section 31.21 of our municipal ordinances, and it says, with respect to the Planning and Zoning Board, that, and the appointment, says that village members shall be appointed by the village council. It doesn't say that the village council shall affirm or veto an appointment made essentially by staff or the members of the, the existing members of the board. And they could have said that, because in the very next subsection, when they're talking about members of the board who are appointed from the extraterritorial jurisdiction, they say that those shall be appointed by the County Board of Commissioners upon the recommendation by the village council. But when you're talking about members of the Planning and Zoning Board who are residents of the village itself, within the municipal limits, the, the only appointment people spoken of in the ordinance are the village council. And I'm concerned that if the village council does not take a more active role in the appointment process, that it is abdicating a responsibility that's delegated to us, specifically delegated to us. And what does our so-called approval mean if we haven't had that active role and been able to consider a number of, you know, possible candidates? So, I, I also want, want to express a concern about the process and make sure that we're tracking our, our ordinance requirements as best we can, that the council is fulfilling its responsibilities as set out in the ordinances. I think it's, it's one of the jobs we're supposed to be doing.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
Well, I imagine we're going to have other comments at a later time when we discuss this at a work meeting-
Yeah.
-and moving forward, so we'll preserve a lot of that. I think it would be wise to have a legal opinion on this also. Maybe Mike Newman can weigh in.
Sure.
Seems to me like we just voted on something, and it's an appointment, so it sounds like it's legal to me. I also want us to make sure that we're being very careful, because for a system that's not supposed to be working correctly, we seem to get a whole bunch of great people. So, I'm not seeing where it's broken. But I'm happy to discuss this at a later time and engage with other people's ideas there.
I agree. Thank you for that suggestion, that we have a village attorney join the discussion. Thanks.
Fine. We'll move that on to a future meeting. Item number six, Jeff?
All right, we also have a need to replace Eric Von Salson as the chairperson for the Pinehurst Historic Preservation Commission. And based on consultation with, with staff, and considering John Taylor's interest in filling that position, we believe that he would be a very high-quality candidate for that position, and we offer his nomination. John can't be with us here tonight.
Am I right? He's currently a member of the Historic Preservation-
Yes, he's been on the, I thought, his, or- Do we have any comments from staff with respect to this particular nomination, from Alex or Darren who are here? Are there any questions from council about this appointment? Or any other information you'd like to have?
Just, are there any other pending vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Because Eric Von Salson left, we have that position to fill as well.
So, we're going to have to backfill Jack.
Yeah, there'll be a vacancy there. There really is a vacancy now. And that will come back to us with other applications.
Thank you.
All right. So, is there a motion, then, to approve the appointment of John Taylor as chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yeah. I, I move to approve the appointment of John Taylor to the Historic Preservation Commission chairmanship.
That's a motion by Pat Prizella. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Lydia Bosch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item number seven. Jeff? Sandborn?
All right, I'm going to ask Mark to come up here to cover the details, but we have in this year's plan a project to replace the HVAC system that serves this wing of, of Village Hall, Assembly Hall, sits back there. And it's come in a little bit higher than what was budgeted, and so I'll turn it over to, to Mark to describe this.
Just as a background on this, the equipment is approximately 25 years old, so it is nearing the end of its life cycle here, and it was part of the original construction of this building back in 1997. As Jeff mentioned, we had $120,000 budgeted for this, and as we've seen with other projects and equipment purchases, inflation has hit this number too. So, we did a formal bid process for this, because equipment purchases over $90,000 require council approval. The manager cannot approve that level. So, we did go through a formal bid process. We had talked to three or four different vendors who expressed interest, but when we had the bid opening, only one bid was received, and that was by Simmons Heating and Air. They are our current preventive maintenance vendor. They take care of all of the villages HVAC systems currently, so they are familiar with the system, the issues, the challenges that we have in this room with that equipment. So, they're, they know what we're looking for. Staff is comfortable with them doing this project. It's just unfortunate that it's over budget and we only had one bid.
So, the, on the one hand, they were the only one to respond, and I, and on the other hand, they already do our maintenance, and the, and your experience with them has been quite, quite good. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, yeah. Overall, we've been very satisfied with them. They've been our vendor for probably five years now, give or take, so.
All right. Now, I noted, the emphasis of the replacement here is that it's, it's the main system, it's the main compressors and all that. Is there anything to be done with the duct work, or the way the fans work, or anything like that, that might help the heating and cooling in this, in this room, which everybody that works in this room or sits in the seat I'm in realizes is variable, but go ahead.
It's either very hot or very cold, and it fluctuates about every 20 minutes in here right now. They would be using the existing duct work that is in place, but it would be new equipment. They would have to put in new refrigerant coolant, you know, depending on what the system needs, so, but, but it is utilizing the same duct work, so. I can't speak to the question about the fans. Kevin Brewer is the one who bid this project out, and he prepared the bid specs for this.
I'm afraid if they got into the duct work, we'd be talking lots more.
You'd be looking at a lot more money if we were replacing that.
Hopefully, the compressors and the way the baffling or whatever it works will, will be helpful. And we are reaching the end of the system's life here, you feel, anyway, Mark, so we should-
Yeah, we're at 25 years, probably 25-plus from when that stuff was manufactured, so.
Yeah.
And it's a high-use system, so.
So, we're asked here to meet a higher-than-budgeted number. No change in the material we've received with respect to that number?
No, that, that was the bid we received, so that would be the price for, to get the project completed, and we have funds in our contingency where we can cover the overage.
And, and when would they be able to start this and finish this, do you think?
I believe, once we get the approval from you, they can order the equipment, and I think Kevin said it was probably a three-to-six-week process for the equipment to get here, and then they would start installation. So, we'd have to look at the schedule, the calendar, to see what's in this building, so that we could time that appropriately.
Yeah, any idea how many days the room might be not, not usable while that's going on?
I would probably estimate a week to two weeks.
Something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Would you coordinate that?
Yes, sir.
Right. Questions for Mark Wagner on this item?
You know, one question. The village manager mentioned, for this wing, is this HVAC, is it just this side of the Village Hall, so we have a separate unit on the other side?
There, there are individual units on the other side, this just serves this building.
And are those ones over there also coming up on their life cycle, or they've been changed out in the last few years?
We've systematically been replacing those as issues have arose and as they've reached their life cycle too.
Okay.
So, this is part of a, kind of a preventive maintenance and planned replacement schedule.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mark? Jane, go ahead.
Mark, were you surprised we got only one bid on a project this size?
A little bit, especially with Brady Services being one of the other interested vendors. They used to have the contract here. I don't know if that's indicative of how hard it's going to be to switch out this system that they weren't interested, but we did think that we would at least get another one.
Any explanation? Supply chain? Just, it was weird to me, a project this side, we only, this side's, they only had one bid.
I think supply chain definitely is impacting this in lead times to get equipment, but from what Kevin indicated, talking with Simmons, they were, they were able to secure the equipment, and they would be ready to start on that once we give them the go-ahead.
You, you did say Simmons does everything else for the village.
That's correct.
So, sometimes that impacts how other vendors view-
That, that is true also.
-submitting bids. That's my own experience. Thank you.
Jane, you had a question?
Is there, do you have, do we have any other way to, I guess, double-check the, the price, or any reason to feel that the price either is probably as fair as it's going to get, or, or on the other hand, isn't so wonderful?
I think, based on a, a recent HVAC system that we replaced this year that was over budget as well, that it's, it's in line with that pricing and the, kind of the percent increase that we're seeing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff Morgan, did you have a question?
No.
All right. Anything else? We need a motion on this, item number seven, to approve this increase in the budget amount.
Okay. Yeah, I, I authorized the mayor or his designee to enter into a contract with Simmons Heating, Cooling and Electrical for the HVAC replacement in the Assembly Hall.
That's a motion by Patrick Prizella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on into the last major item on the regular agenda, but one that will take some conversation. Jeff Sandborn?
All right, thanks, John. And I'll ask Doug to come up and, and facilitate more discussion on this, but, of course, we, we have plans to expand our library and archive services, and we've selected the firm of Oakley Collier, or you, you have selected the firm of Oakley Collier to do the architectural work and ultimately, contract management for whoever builds that new facility or expanded facility. And what we, what we have for your consideration tonight is not a contract, it's more, I guess you could think of more along the lines of, it's a term sheet pursuant to a future contract that we would engage into with Oakley Collier to perform those services.
Doug, I would just open the discussion by saying, after your initial report, there were a number of other requests for information, and I really appreciate your fact, your, your ability to get that to us. So, this is a little bit of a complicated issue, as, as we all look at it, because we have issues of budgeted amounts, historic recommendation amounts, and, and the reality of the current situation in supply chain and, and valuation of, of this sort of work. So, thank you for helping us already, and then I'm sure this evening, in working through this, this particular process.
Yeah, no problem. So, typically, for all design services, it's a 10% of what the total budget is for the project. Right now, I've been going back and forth with Oakley Collier and saying, well, we don't know exactly how much this building might cost, so I asked them for a proposal to provide the initial programming and schematic design work, and from there, we can find a full project cost. Once we get that full project cost, the, we can amend their budgeted amount to 10% of whatever the project is. So, this provides us the most flexibility to be able to, you know, determine what we want for the library as a whole, all the features that we want there, the size, et cetera, and we'll be able to get a good firm estimate from their estimators on what that will cost us. So, that's, that's the simple version. If there's questions, happy to answer those.
I, I think there'll be a lot of, a lot of different questions, but from what we've been talking about, but did Audrey have a comment for? Jeff, I'm sorry.
When I jump in, and this is maybe just to amplify a point that Doug made, in this environment of cost escalation, of course, everybody, we're all nervous about what this project might cost now, but what, what this framework allows us to do is engage Oakley Collier to do the design work and have a thoughtful interaction with staff and council about what things we really want to have in these new expanded facilities, and how much it'll cost, so that we can figure out what that end solution is.
That's a helpful framework, Jeff. Thank, thank you for that. Well, Jane, would you care to start with questions you may have about Doug's memo and what this particular project's all about?
So, so we're now in the position, and this is nothing, not Oakley Collier's fault, but we're in the position where both our budget and the scope of the project are kind of up for grabs. And we're going to have to reinvent the wheel a little bit. I mean, we do have the 2021 needs assessment, but we're going to need to go back and figure it out. And we don't have, if we had either the scope of work that we didn't think might really need to be real valuable- need to be reevaluated a bit due to changes in lifestyle and demographics and everything after COVID, or if we thought the budget was pretty solid, it would be, I think, a lot easier, but we've got a lot of moving parts. So in looking at Oakley Collier's proposal, that for $140,000, they do a Phase One, which would involve $5,000 worth of looking at what's out there already, existing conditions, and then $20,000 for this planning, programming phase, which seems to be reevaluating the scope of the project and the budget. And then they're going to do the schematic drawings. Well, I would prefer that they come back to the council when they get through the programming phase before they start doing any schematic drawings, because it is so fluid, I think they need to come back to us at that point. And I'm also wondering whether the $20,000 effort into reinventing the wheel is going to be adequate. So that's where I'm coming out on concerns with the approach. I took a look at the numbers. I like a column of numbers, but I played around with these originalist estimates, the low and the high from January 2021, and the new inflation-adjusted low and the high. And it looks as though the new set of numbers simply took the old set of numbers and increased them by 30%.
So.
Because if you look down through the building construction, the site work, the furniture fixtures and equipment, and the professional services, and the relationship of those numbers to each other, they are the same, the relationship of those numbers is the same in 2021 as it is in 2022. So they just upped everything by 30%, which means to me, says to me, that the new numbers are a guesstimate too. And then I look back at your memo that says, well, the $4 million budget placeholder was just that, a placeholder, and it was never the right number. So.
Yeah, so let me step back for a minute. So I think you are right that the.
But at C here.
The building size is a little bit in flux, and the budget's a little bit in flux, but that's the case for all of our projects, for any project that you're moving forward. At this stage, you don't know exactly how big you want the building, what exactly you want in the building, until you go through the programming and schematic design phase with the architects to decide that, and then they have cost estimators that come up with the more firm price. Going back to your point about the fees, comparing it from almost two years ago to now, I think the construction price went up roughly 30%, which we've looked at comparisons, and that seems right for two years in this market, the 30%. The other fees didn't go up all at that same rate. And then, I forget what the last thing I was going to say, but.
I think there was a comment about coming back on an earlier timeframe versus later.
Oh, coming for the.
If I remember correctly, when we interviewed them, one of the things they talked about was they front-loaded a lot of their interactions with the staff and with us to do that. So my assumption was, we would be having that. I certainly understand that you want to be able to have changes early versus late because it's much cheaper, appropriate, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and I think they would agree with that as well, that they want to spend all their time with us getting exactly what we want at first, rather than after the designs are all completed and having us change our minds at that point.
Do we need to have that specifically spelled out in this term sheet, though?
I don't believe so. I think they would be more than comfortable coming and doing that anyway.
But well, coming costs money, so.
Yeah, but they have built into their price that they were going to come several times anyway, so. If you want, I'm happy to go back and request that of them.
Yes, let's put it in there.
Now, under programming, it says, a lesson, it's meeting with the owner's team to review programming deliverables. Deliverables is also included in this phase. That suggests to me that they are coming back to us with what they find out in programming.
You're looking, excuse me, Lydia, you're reading under the proposed project budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right off their letter. That's a good.
You know, now, under three, it says, presentation to village of owner, staff, and village council as deemed necessary. So the language there is a little bit more detailed, but up under programming, it talks about meeting with the owner's team to review the programming deliverables is also included in this phase, which it sounds like they plan to come back to us to tell us what they learn.
Yeah, and I think that's really to the core of the stage of these discussions at the moment, the interaction with the council and the staff as these things are starting to develop, so we all are on the same pages going forward. That's really to your main point, Jane.
That's right. I want to, I would like to see, I would like to see it specifically put in the proposal or whatever you call it, that they will come back to us following the programming phase before they start doing their schematic drawing. Once they do the drawing, or, you know.
I thought what Lydia just read already says that.
Yeah, I think.
Meeting with the owner's team to review the programming deliverables is also included in this phase.
Owner's team is whoever we select, which is, we would select you, so.
Where are you reading from, Lydia?
The second page of the proposal, under this last sentence in the paragraph under programming.
Yeah, part B.
It's in the letter from Oakley, correct, Lydia?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And it's the third?
Yeah, the last, very last sentence before deliverables. Meeting with the owner's team to review programming deliverables is also included in this phase.
Yeah.
That's pretty specific. I.
They can't not do it. It requires them to do it, and as Jeff said, we decide who owner's team is.
Yeah. I do think we may want to, I think I may have said this in email, I want to go on record that I'm deeming it now necessary that they come back for a presentation to the village and the village staff.
I agree.
I mean, as deemed necessary. Let's not be like Star Trek either. And I had to, the one thing I want to be clear about is, I have, I think the proposal as it reads, I get it, I understand what they're doing, but I want to be sure that they know, and I want to be sure I'm stating this correctly, that by us voting for this proposal from Oakley tonight, we are no way voting for the, a price tag for the entire project. That's to come after we get to review the schematic and evaluate, in the scheme of our budget and the state of the world, what we want to do.
Right. Yeah, we specifically designed this proposal to avoid that.
I got you.
And they're going to put together, so remember, they're not building this facility, so.
Right.
They're going to put together the architectural work to support construction of this facility, and then ultimately, we're going to have to put that out for bid.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think this is an extraordinarily reasonable approach. Was it our idea or their idea to do it this way, to break it off like this?
Yeah, now that you said it's extraordinarily reasonable, it was my idea.
Well, I think you did a great job, but I do have just a couple of questions. Under program, it says they will meet with user groups, stakeholders, and information sessions with public users may be included. So what's the difference between the user group/stakeholders and the public users? It would seem to me that public users are an important piece of this puzzle, but what's the difference?
I think the public users would be a wide-open meeting that anyone in the public could come to, and if we had more of a stakeholders, it would be, you know, the friends or a group that Audrey's more familiar with.
I agree with Doug. That's the way I interpreted, that we would select perhaps an advisory group or whatever, and they would meet and then go on to the general public and say, this is what we've talked about, this is what we're looking at.
Is this like a Fair Barn exercise?
For here, or something like that, yeah.
Or here, yeah.
Done it here with the sticky notes.
Well, we've all recognized the value of the needs assessment study, but we've also recognized the impact of COVID. You've stated it, we've stated it, and so it's important that we update this to see what the public really wants. And you've had some great ideas that, and what you've seen since COVID and the aftermath of COVID, so, yeah, that's going to be critical. Down on that page, separate services provided by the owner if required. How do we determine if these are required? And, you know, we've got the topographical surveys, hazardous material abatement, is this something that as they get into it, they will decide we need this, or is it some, how does that work?
Doug, before you reply, exactly what page and paragraph are you reading from? And this, again, this is an Oakley's letter.
Same, same page of their proposal, so.
December 6th letter. And where is it?
The second page. You've got your programming section, your schematic design section, and I agree with Pat, we'd like them to come back to talk about schematic design, but under this, paragraph, sub-paragraph D, separate services provided by the owner if required.
So everybody's got that? Okay, go ahead, Jeff. Oh, Doug.
Yeah, so this would be if, as they're doing their existing conditions documentation, if they go in there and find something that, oh, we need to look into this, like, we may need a geotechnical if they think there's an issue with the water table or something like that. We may need to hire another engineer or consultant to answer some of those questions for us.
Okay, yeah, and geotechnical, it's something like in older businesses, older buildings that often comes in. And I guess another big question I have, looking at the new estimated cost of a good library, have we talked to the library board about this, about the new number? Are they aware that it's going to be more than?
I mean, I haven't spoken to them specifically about what the budget is. I think the most recent numbers that were put out there were from this needs assessment, which had that range from 4.3 to 6 million-ish.
We haven't had a specific discussion, Lydia, but actually, the specific discussions today have been more about how they would organize fundraising, which is their primary mission at this point. However, once we get this material from Oakley Collier, I think we certainly would want to review that with them at the time, yeah.
And in that conversation we had them about fundraising, we had a piece of that discussion was a recognition of the cost escalation environment we're operating in.
Okay, so they're not going to be caught by surprise, but Audrey, wasn't Great Expectations expected to be $5 million?
Yes, it was.
And that was when?
That was 2010 or 2011, I believe.
And that was a pretty, a very extensive expansion, but that was a $5 million number that was floating around for a while. So $5 million from a long time ago.
Exactly.
Makes it a little bit easier to advance.
Well, but I think the projects were different, and I.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. I think it will be a very different type of project.
Yeah.
And as I mentioned before in a prior meeting, the uses will be a little different. So yes, that was, excuse me, that was the number, and that was based on an existing building and matching, et cetera, that sort of stuff, but that was the number that was floating around, as you say, back then.
And I know examples are just to compare what we expect to be doing with that, but I guess my point is, was that those who were working with it back then were, I guess, I can say comfortable with a $5 million price tag.
Was.
Building, but now we're years later with cost escalation.
I don't, I don't, but with those. I was not involved, and I don't recall that 5 million was a comfortable number. I think those are sort of always challenged numbers. It was a total fundraising effort.
It was a scary number, yeah.
So it was a little different.
Well, my question there would be, but back then, was the village council involved in that? No.
We gave a million dollars to it.
We've given them a good amount of money over 20 years or whatever, but the fact is, back then, that was a decision that was not about the village council and taxpayer money. That was a decision, a private decision.
Well, we did have a commitment.
Can you remind us all what is in the current SOP for 2025 for this project?
Yeah, it's 3.6 million in construction, and we've already budgeted $400,000 for the design.
So there's 4 million.
Yeah.
Right? We also have another million in the budget right now for this project.
That we have it used.
We just cleverly earmarked it early because of an opportunity that we thought we were going to be able to take advantage of.
Mm-hmm.
So all along, we've been thinking about not 4 million, but 5 million.
Before all this inflation.
That's right.
I'm, I'll use, I won't use the word comfortable, but my point is, I understand how numbers have been put up in the past and where we really are now, and I'm not confused about that or am I discouraged in any way. I think the important road we're on now is to get with Oakley Collier, and as Jeff pointed out earlier, let's see what everybody's best thinking is on this and what the price tag will be, and then we'll really be able to deal with the world.
Right, exactly. That's the point of this exercise, really, to get to that point.
We're certainly in the driver's seat. We get to determine how much we want to spend and what we want the library to look like.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Now, Jane, you were in the middle of some questions earlier. Did you have others, or did you carry on from that?
Well, the only thing that, you know, expanding out from the library conversation is, we may want to, you know, this was the list from the retreat of our five-year capital, list of five-year capital projects, is to keep updating our placeholder numbers.
We do.
As we go along so that we don't end up being seduced into doing a project, and then it turns out to cost twice as much as we thought it was going to cost, and that would have skewed our priority, maybe.
Yeah, I think that's fair. As we put together this next year's budget, we'll take that into account.
Yeah, keep the placeholders up to date, both as to intent and cost.
Right.
Yeah, okay, all right.
You guys, you made some of those decisions last week.
Yeah.
As we were engaging you in some, should we apply inflation factor to this number and that number and the other? We didn't get around to all of them, but we'll complete that process.
I think most of those numbers got bumped up hour by hour as we were working last week.
Good thing we got out early, huh?
All right, so in this conversation, are there other points, questions?
I've got one.
Jeff?
The, I'm very comfortable that we have budgeted for this. I recognize we don't have a finalized number. I recognize we don't have schematic designs. I do recognize that we've also chosen Oakley Collier on this and engaged them, that they've talked about, talked with us early. I think it's very wise for us to make sure that we're talking with them early, that we've seen the programming phase before going to the schematic design, comfortable with all that. And I don't recall us ever being seduced into getting into something which we couldn't pay for that we haven't talked about, because I think we have a pretty responsible project and then process we do for our projects. The one thing I did hear that I want to make sure that we do is that we are engaging, that Oakley and Collier are also engaging with our library board early on in this process. I would like their opinions also as to what's going on. Other than that, that's all the points I can think of. Thank you.
Jeff, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I agree with that. Only at this point, it's up to Oakley Collier to work with the, work with the village. These are our properties.
Correct.
The mission of the library board is to raise funds, run the bookshop, and we will consult with them.
As they're getting ready to raise funds for us on this?
Well, they're a long way from.
They didn't know what all they're raising funds for.
Right.
It's hard to sell something you don't know what's happening on.
They will certainly be engaged in a very robust way as a major stakeholder.
Yeah, that's all right.
Tony?
Yeah, well, there's a stakeholder process mentioned here for them, so they would be participants in that. I got one question, I keep looking for it in one of your memos, Doug. I thought I mentioned it, saw it once, but I can't find it now. What is the current square footage of the Givens Memorial Library?
It's about 7,072.
I think it's eight, about 8,000 including the lower level.
Well, there's some basement, yeah.
But that includes the Tufts Archives.
The library and the archives are both approximately 35, 36,000.
So it's about 3,500 for, archives, 3,500.
The first floor is 6,300 square feet. This is out of the needs assessment. Which is divided between the library and the archives, 3,825 square feet for the library and 2,475 square feet for the archives. There is a basement that contains 2,100 square feet, which is devoted only to the archives.
And the 2,100, that's a generous estimate of what the usable space is in the current configuration. The upstairs was about, just right at 8,000.
The upstairs is 6,300.
60, oh, 6,300, right, okay. So, that's the question.
3,800 is given. Okay, I'm fine. I got the number to work with.
Okay. Doug, anything else from you then?
Nope.
You have your marching orders to continue. All right, good. Audrey? You have your marching orders to continue. All right. Good. Audrey, Doug, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
What, did we have a...
Motion?
Do we have to have a motion for giving them marching orders?
Yeah, I've got assigned a contract, so you better give me the authority to do that.
I move to authorize the mayor is, does he need to enter into a contract with Oakley Collier's Architects Professional Association for Design Services for Renovations to the Given Memorial Library and Tufts Archives?
I think we might suggest amending that. This isn't a contract, and we're going to need to bring the actual contract back to you.
So what are you, enter into the term sheet?
Sorry?
Don't want to call it a contract? You want to...
About a preliminary contract.
Or a term sheet, or what do you want to call this?
Wait a minute. I'll let the staff think on that.
Yeah, I think if approval of the term sheet would be appropriate, and we will finalize the A&amp;A contract with Oakley Collier and bring that back.
Why don't we give the date of the term sheet as well?
As of December 6.
Particular term sheet.
Okay. I move to authorize the mayor is, does he need to enter into the term sheet dated December 6, 2022, submitted by Oakley Collier, with Oakley Collier Architects Professional Association for Design Services for Renovations to the Given Memorial Library and Tufts Archives.
Before, there's a second. As nearly as you understood that, Jeff Sanborn, is that...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Morgan, motion by Lydia Bosch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll move on to item number nine in the regular meeting, other business. Does anybody from the council or staff have other business? I have one comment I'll make, or one request, but any other business? And then I'll take comments. The village clerk will bring that list if there is one. My question is really for, is really kind of a follow-up on last week's storm, Jeff. Have we set a date for the Parks and Recreation interviews and whatnot? It'll be in January, obviously, but are we working on dates for that now?
We don't have a date, and we don't expect to be able to lock one in until after the first of the year. I think that's...
Okay. All right. All right. We'll need some, we know we've got at least two meetings that month of the council, everything else going on, so we'll need some time to get that planned for all of our schedules. I'm sure you'll do that as best you can. So that's my update there. Anything else on other business? Patrick?
Yeah, I had two. I asked one question, I had two others. I found one of them. Is it possible to, for staff to look at the last time the village went through a property rate evaluation, I guess it was three years ago, what was the change? What was the percentage of bump up as far as revenue? And I assume you guys had that somewhere in the cloud. Okay. Whenever you can get...
I don't remember what it was.
I'm sure. But whenever you get it, it would be helpful as we start to get to the budget.
Pat, are you talking about what we do with the tax rate, what we do with, how we balance the revenue?
I want to see how much more we got from that last property valuation.
In hard dollars or percentage increase?
Well, you look at them in both, sure. But certainly hard dollars. And...
I guess we can, yeah, we'll know that. All right.
The, I don't know. Someone else go ahead and ask a question.
Lydia, anything further? Jeff Morgan, Jane? Got 10 seconds, Pat.
Yeah, I don't know what it was, but that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Okay. Good point. Thank you very much. We'll move on into comments from attendees. We have Teresa Johns. Teresa, I'm not sure if that microphone is on, but you know what color to look for, I think.
I think it's on.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to request that you all, the village, have a verifiable official notification for ordinance violations. Recently, after I received a certificate of occupancy for my new home, a Village of Pinehurst employee emailed my builder's secretary that my retaining wall was in the golf course rear setback. The secretary forwarded the email to me, and I contacted Village of Pinehurst for more information. As the homeowner, I am the only one who can apply for a variance. Therefore, the Village of Pinehurst needs to notify me in an official way, and I might suggest a certified letter. Additionally, I think that the Village of Pinehurst needs to streamline their PDOs. There are at least three sections dealing with retaining walls and setback encroachments. At a hearing I sat through prior to mine, which didn't occur, different topic, on retaining walls, even the P&amp;Z committee were unsure which of the ordinances they should be considering. One allowed for a height of 18 inches of the retaining wall, the other ordinance would allow for 36 inches. So quite a difference. And so how does a resident know which way to argue if the Planning and Zoning Committee isn't even sure which ordinance they're going to be enforcing? Thank you.
May I ask one question, Teresa? This is a retaining wall at your home, 25 Oronamink, correct?
Yes.
All right. Because we had issues like this that came up recently at the Board of Adjustment, retaining walls, and I think it was identified at that time.
There were two cases.
There's some inconsistency. Two cases the same night.
Yes, I sat through one that was two and a half hours. That was not my case, and then they could not hear my case because of a clerical error on the Village of Pinehurst part. So I will be back in January.
Thank you. Jeff will leave the follow-up on that with you. All right. There are no other comments from attendees listed. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to the village council? Seeing none, we'll move a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and move to the work session.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Patrick Pizzella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. We'll move to the work session. Would the council like to take a short break?
Yes.
Okay. 6:15. And we'll pick up the work session at that point.